Good evening and welcome to the June 14th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you that are with us tonight in our audience and we're glad to have those that are watching at home. At this time, I'm going to ask you to please stand as Natalie Hardeman, Principal at Reeves-Rogers Elementary School, will lead us in our pledge, followed then by our moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our moment of silence. Thank you. All right, members of the board, you have seen a copy of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Any question or comment? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I see none. Thank you. Communications. Ms. Trejo?
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Have a few communication items for you tonight. First of all, we start with Mitchell Nielsen. They would like to thank the amazing agents at Park Realty, Sinette P. and Jonathan Dodson in particular. They have, for the past 10 years, held and given prizes for an annual essay contest. So students in kindergarten through sixth grade wrote about who they see as a leader and why. These were judged and then the winners received new bicycle and a helmet, $50 gift cards, $20 Walmart cards, and $10 McDonald's card. So I think you've heard me for the last 10 years talk about this essay contest and we appreciate our community partners like Park Realty. Also, MCS is pleased to announce that Quenina Bell, the principal at Hobgood Elementary, recently received the Jay Harmon Home Team Hero of the Month Award. This honor recognizes the heroes that impact people in our community and change lives in our own backyard. The nomination that they received for Quenina said, "I have great appreciation for Ms. Bell's leadership as a principal of Hobgood Elementary School. She is dedicated, committed, and compassionate member of the education profession. Her commitment to excellence is evident in her ability to listen, build consensus, and develop and maintain high expectations for faculty and student performance." And Ms. Bell was presented with a nice gift last week. Way to end the school year, right? Also, the Nashville Business Journal ranked Discovery School in the top three elementary schools in the middle Tennessee region. This was in their book of lists last week. It's based on performance scores and we want to take time to congratulate Discovery on that. So those are my communications. I'll turn it over to Dr. Duke for his spotlight on education.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. As we know, our school year has wrapped up and we are still having a lot of exciting things going on for our students during the month of June and July. Of course, our summer learning camps are often running and we're having a great time there, but we also have a really robust ESP program going on this summer throughout our district and we have brought back several activities for our families that we have not been able to offer the last two years and, man, they're going great. So I'm going to ask Ms. Candy Powers to come up, who is fresh, speaking of, just back from Huntsville, Alabama, on one of those trips today. So Ms. Powers, I'm going to turn it over to you to tell our board about some of the great summer learning camps we have going on this year that we're so glad to bring back.
Absolutely. Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
I am just off of a field trip. We had a wonderful, wonderful time, wonderful tour, guides, wonderful planetarium visit. It was really cool. Kids learned a lot and had a lot of fun. Before I get started with the quick PowerPoint update, I just wanted to thank you again for approving our recruitment and retention incentives. That has brought in, since you approved that, we've had probably over 150 applications since the first of May. And they are still coming almost daily. I get an email every time someone applies, so it's ding 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 a lot lately. So we're very, very pleased and are looking forward to hiring for the fall so that we can eliminate our waitlist. So I just want to thank you again for that. Our summer camps are going on and we are actually combined down to seven schools this summer. So we have Scales and Case and Lane combined and other schools combined together for a total of seven sites. And in those seven sites, each of them are offering unique camps. The very first one listed here, Camp Big Shots, is a field trip. I just got back from that camp. That is specifically for fifth and sixth graders, who we know needed something really special for the summer. It's really hard to entertain fifth and sixth graders. But this two-week camp, they don't have a second to breathe all day long. They are so busy. I can't wait for the video that we're putting together to post it on our Facebook page so that you all get to enjoy that as well. We've had the best time. And we have one more field trip coming up. We have our canoe field trip that we take all the fifth and sixth graders down the Harpeth River. It's really safe, I promise. The water's really low. So that's coming up Thursday and we will wrap that camp up this Friday. Of course, at all 13 of our sites on July 18th, all of our sites will go back to their home schools and we will offer Kinder Camp at all 13 of those sites. And right now, we have Archery Camp going on, well, Archery's going on in Camp Big Shots, but it's also being offered, I think Salem has had Archery Camp, Discovery has it next week. Mr. Matthew Clarity, Mitchell Nielsen teacher, is also a certified archery instructor, so we use him as much as he's willing to work all summer long. The kids love archery. It's a great, great opportunity for them to get their first exposure to it in elementary school, since it's really getting bigger in middle school and high school. And we have, of course, art camps at almost every site, claymation camps, dance camps, drone camp, edible education, makerspace, soccer, woodworking, violin, you name it, we've probably got a camp for it. Field trips, this, we wanted to give back. We received quite a bit of grant funding from the state and we wanted to give back to our parents this summer. Field trips can get very expensive, so we did a $5 flat fee for all of our parents as a way to give back so that no child has to be left behind because they can't pay. We wouldn't do that anyway if we know about it, but we made it a whole lot easier by charging just $5 for any field trip. So some of the field trips they're going on this week, last week, and the week before, Adventure Science Center, we've traveled to the Chattanooga Aquarium. Of course, I went to Huntsville today and several other sites are going. The zoo, various skate centers, Smyrna and Murfreesboro, Sky Zone, Smyrna Bowling Center, the list is really endless. Lots of water days and things like that planned as well. Also, special activities. We have cone of ice every week and as another way to give back to our parents this summer, you know, I've got children, it's really difficult when they drop them off somewhere and they say, "Oh, Mom, I need $5." Because we don't really use cash anymore, so it's difficult for parents. So I wanted to also give back in the way that we are giving all of our kids, including summer school children that are at summer school sites, free cone of ice twice in June and twice in July. Well, our summer school kids won't get it in July, but they are getting it free for the month of June. Also, lots of pizza parties and in our pizza parties, no child is without pizza. Everybody gets pizza, no matter who signed up. We always order enough for every child regardless of whether they signed up or not. Goat yoga is really fun. Someone brings in goats and you can get down on your hands and knees. I know Mr. Bryson, Principal at Pittard, did that. I don't know if he's here tonight, but he did that last year. I've got a picture of him on his knees with a goat on his back. Kids love it. It's a lot of fun and if they don't invite me on that day, I'm going to be pretty upset because I haven't had a goat on my back yet. Lots and lots of water days, which we need with these 97-degree temperatures. Glow parties, we have some teachers in our district that are amazing and share their amazingness with ESP. In particular, I want to shout out Kimberly Nelson. She is a fifth-grade teacher at Black Fox Elementary and she has the best glow parties. She will decorate her room and do all the things so when she turns out the light, everything in her room is glowing, all the games the kids are playing are glowing. She is the best. So we've kind of stolen from her what she does and other sites are doing it as well. Carnival days, John Pittard just had their Carnival Day last week. They had a Carnival Week. If you didn't get a chance to walk into John Pittard last week and see the decorations that that director went all out for, and Ms. Barton, I know that you know Ms. Vaughn and the amazing director that she is and the decoration she put out, and I believe, Dr. Duke, that you were there and saw those as well. You were like, "Who did this?" Well, ESP did that. ESP, of course. Do you have any questions for me tonight?
Where do I sign up?
$100 a week. And we're full for this.
I will say, and I really want to miss Powers to spotlight this because of, you know, I think we think school's out during the summer, but there is so much going on for our families during the summer and we just really appreciate the, again, kind of coming out of some of the restrictions from the last two years and she's been really purposeful and planning to say, "Let's make it a really great summer for kids."
It has been a really great summer so far. So please stop by any of our open sites, take a tour, see what the kiddos are doing, check out our Facebook page and our Twitter page. I know Mr. Ballard frequently likes our Twitters, our Twitter posts, so I appreciate that. So I know he sees all those engineering things that we're doing. So thank you all so much.
What are the sites?
Okay, all the sites. Discovery School is open and Black Fox is combined with them for the summer. Irma Siegel and John Pittard are combined at John Pittard. Hobgood is housing Bradley and Reeves families. Scales and Case and Lane are combined at Case and Lane. Overall Creek and Salem are too big on their own to combine with anyone, so they are open on their own, both of those schools.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Congratulations. Sounds like a wonderful program.
It is. We're having a great time.
Field trips look amazing.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I posted on Facebook the other night. I can't believe I get paid to do this job sometimes, really. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, Dr., do you spotlight on education? I'm sorry, no. Best of MCS, ooh.
Again, this is my favorite part of every meeting and so I always love coming down here and spotlighting someone from our community. So I am pleased tonight to present our Best of MCS recognition to an employee who has served our schools and our community for 28 years. And I'll tell you, one cannot think of Bradley Academy without thinking of Ms. Florence Smith. So Ms. Smith, if you'll please join me up here, I would appreciate it. When you think of Bradley, it goes without hesitation that Ms. Smith is an integral part of their fabric. She consistently displays a passion, a commitment, and an excellence to serving our students and it does not go unnoticed. She has a servant's heart and she truly wants every child to succeed. She is one of the first people in the building each morning and helps prepare every day for success. Not only is she active every day in the building, but she plays a key role each year in many events, including our African-American History Month Celebration at Bradley. She puts up a stellar African-American Month display and personally prepares and cooks all the food for the Community African-American Celebration at Patterson Park. And let me just say, as someone who went this year, if you have not had the opportunity to try her cornbread, you are missing out. So I'm going to put that plug in there for next year. Not only does she prepare food then, during basketball season, she, Ms. Smith, makes sure the Bradley basketball team gets meals on game nights. She is always at school events and she has been known to even call students for a wake-up call when needed. I talked to Mr. Rocha, the principal at Bradley, and Mr. Rocha told me the following about Ms. Smith. He said, "It's a privilege to have Ms. Florence serve our Murfreesboro community. She is an amazing, strong, accomplished inspiration to all. It is a common sight to see Ms. Smith greeting every student by name in the morning, making masks by the dozens during COVID, serving at election polls, single-handedly preparing all the meals for MCS' Black History Month Celebration, filling gaps that we may not even realize are there, and serving our youth. I truly cannot capture all of the volunteer roles she takes on because she is involved in everything." I continue to say to her, "I didn't know you ran that too." We are truly the benefactors of her presence, her compassion, and her grace. And on behalf of the Bradley community, we are better versions of ourself because of her. As our kids would say, "We love her and she's got skills." So thank you, Mr. Rocha, for that. But words truly can't capture all the wonderful things that makes Ms. Smith so special to our community. She is truly someone who makes MCS great and one of the first people I met when I walked into Bradley and every time I go into Bradley, I know I can see Ms. Florence ready to greet me as well. So we want to say thank you for your years of service, hopefully many more to come still. Thank you for all you do for us and thank you for representing the best of MCS.
Thank you very much. I would just like to leave you with this poem, "Footsteps." There are young ones who are following in our footsteps, but they have a spell to grow. They want to follow us and walk us, follow us and want to be our big, want to follow us as our big hero. But God has made us with His precious piece of clay to mold and shape and cultivate and guide the right way. I pray if they walk in My footsteps in the path that I have trod, they will be a credit to their country and pleasing to My God. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Florence Smith. You have been, you are an icon, not only for Bradley, but also for this school system as well.
May I interject?
You can.
Oh, my gosh. So she's like a legend. I mean, I've been out of the system now for five years and was there 32 and everybody knows who you are. Other principals wish that you were at their school. I mean, I'm just telling you, so Mr. O'Hara better be. So thank you so much, Ms. Smith.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I say something?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Florence Smith is not just a great asset to the Murfreesboro City Schools, but also the city of Murfreesboro as a whole. I dare say that our community, and I'm speaking of the African-American community, would not be what it is without Ms. Florence Smith. She is a dynamo behind the scenes. She runs everything, whether she officially runs it or not. She stays on top of us for our attendance at all the things we're supposed to attend to. When we don't show up, she will say something about it the next time that she sees you and don't think she's forgotten. She has been a supporter and a vital member of the NAACP, which her sister, Ms. Katie, wave your hand in the back, she's filming, that's her sister, and between the two of them, they keep Murfreesboro running, at the Bradley Museum, everything. If you just show up, if it's going to be an event, Ms. Katie's going to be there and certainly Ms. Florence is going to be there. And so I want to personally say, I thank you for all of your hard work and staying on me because keeping me in line is a full-time job for two people. Thank you.
Two words can nearly... All right, thank you, ma'am. Thank you. All right, board members, do we have a motion to approve the consent items as printed?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Do we have a second, Mr. Settle? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, action items. Dr. Duke? No.
Aww.
Yeah.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You have a copy of Dr. Duke's 2021-22 evaluation. There are three parts to this evaluation. Appendix A is the administrator's perception of the director's performance. This section was completed by the 14 principals and six members of the senior leadership team who report directly to Dr. Duke. It consists of 20 performance objectives ranked on a scale of one to five, with one being significantly below expectations, two being below expectations, three being at expectations, four being above expectations, and five being significantly above expectations. In each window, I put the number of people who chose a score. The overall mean score for this section is 4.87 out of five. The mean score among the principal ratings was 4.89 and the mean score among the senior leadership team ratings was 4.82. The area rated the highest was the director maintains positive relationships with administrators. Appendix B and C of the evaluation are the board members' perceptions of Dr. Duke's performance, with the scoring objectives ranked on the same one-to-five scale. Appendix B is qualitative data based on board observational data. The first section, Board Relationships, had a mean score of 4.82. The next section, Community Relationships, has a mean score of 4.78. Staff and Personnel Relationships had a mean score of 4.57. Facilities and Finance had a mean score of 4.67. Vision had a mean score of 4.75. Student Achievement had a mean score of 4.54. Management and Operations had a mean score of 4.69. Integrity, Fairness, and Ethics had a mean score of 4.76. And finally, Political, Social, Cultural Context had a mean score of 4.65. The total mean score for Appendix B is 4.69. The highest ranking area of this section was Board Relationships. Appendix C measured quantitative data based on the annual objections, excuse me, objectives. This section was scored without rankings for Performance Objective One, which is regarding student achievement and growth, because TN-ready scores were not received in time. However, the Board will have the opportunity to update these scores at a later time. The mean score for Performance Objective Two was 4.86. Objective Three was 4.71. Objective Four, 4.86. Objective Five, 4.71. Objective Six, 4.71. Objective Seven, 4.71. And Objective Eight is 4.43. The total mean score for Appendix C is 4.71, with the highest ranked areas being Objective Two, Develop a School District Strategic Plan, tied with Performance Objective Four, Develop a Comprehensive Plan to Promote School System and Increase Parent and Community Involvement. After Appendix C, there are a couple of comments for board members that you may review. So in scoring the document as a whole, each appendix was weighted for one-third of the overall evaluation score. The weighted score for Appendix A is 1.61. The weighted score for Appendix B is 1.55. And the weighted score for Appendix C is 1.55, for an overall evaluation score of 4.71, which if rounded, equates to a performance of significantly above expectations. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have regarding the evaluation at this time.
Board members, do we have any questions pertaining to the evaluation for Ms. Taylor? I see no response.
Okay, well, I'll continue then. At the last board meeting, the Board voted to extend the contract of Dr. Duke if the evaluation yielded a result of at expectations or better. Based on the results of the evaluation, an extended contract has been presented to the Board. The contract would supersede his existing contract and establish a new contract for a period commencing July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2026. Aside from the amended dates and updated salary information based on district-wide pay increases, the contract language remains the same as the original. So again, based on the evaluation results and the Board's vote at the last meeting, I'm presenting an extended contract for the Board's approval.
All right, board members. Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Any questions about the contract?
Any questions on the contract? I don't know whether to say this or not.
I don't know whether you should either.
Go for it.
Okay. I contacted Dr. Duke, or Trey, whatever you want to call him nicely, about compensation. And his comment to me was, "No. I want nothing more than what the teachers have already have gotten." And so because of that, there is no increase in compensation and that was your choice. And you and I had a very good discussion about that and I applaud you very strongly for those sentiments. Therefore, do I need to make a motion that we approve the contract for Dr. Duke as presented?
You are one of your colleagues.
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
I'll second it, too.
Anybody else want to second?
I think we all do.
We all probably do.
Any question or comment? All in favor, clearly say yes.
I had, the only comment I had was, I'm, well, and I, I'm floored. I do want to say this before we move forward. I have, I don't know what else to say of the job that this man has done for Murfreesboro City Schools. This has been the most challenging couple of years for our school system. We lost a very good director in Dr. Gilbert and we had a great interim director in Ralph. I mean, Ralph, he hit it out of the park and I think he stretched himself to places he didn't think he could and it was beautiful. But I'm so appreciative that Dr. Duke was able to come in and pick it up and run forward and I never imagined that we would be in the place that we are now. And I want to say personally, I appreciate your hard work and since it's all over as far as finding a director and all of that, I will say that you were my number-one choice to begin with. I will say that proudly. You were my A1 choice and I'm glad we got you and I hope we get to stick with you for a long, long time and we're going to make it worth your while. So please, anybody that's watching that wants to steal Trey Duke, keep your hands off. Thank you, Trey.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to extend the contract. Did we have a second? Everybody seconded? So all in favor say aye loudly.
Aye loudly.
All right, thank you very much. Congrats, Dr. Duke. We look forward to four more years of your expert leadership.
Well, I appreciate it. I appreciate your vote. Thank you. I will say, I've said this on multiple occasions, this has by far been the best place to work as a principal and now as a director of schools. I am so proud of Murfreesboro City and I truly get to work with the best principals who love kids and the best central office. who love kids and the best central office staff who will do anything for kids any day of the week, and that's what makes this such a great job. So from our board, who works so well together, to our central office staff, to our principals who are great collaborators, to the teachers who, you know, one of the things I just, we did some feedback meetings with some new teachers, and one of the things they told me was, we love working with teachers in other schools. And I think that starts from the board and goes to central office to principals. It is truly a spirit of collaboration in this district, and it's why our kids are better off. So I'm looking forward to the next four years, and thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next item, Consolidated Application Approved IDEA and ESEA.
Yes, sir. The Tennessee Department of Education requires that local boards of education formally approve our consolidated federal application that outlines the use of our Title I, Title II, Title III IDEA and IDEA pre-K funds. These budgets were presented and approved through our standard budget process in May. This approval is for the completed application, which has been presented to the State Department for their approval, and there have been no changes since you've seen it at the budget process.
Thank you. All right, do we have a motion to approve the application approval?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Suddles, we have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, any question or comment? I see none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you. Budget amendments.
Yes, sir, we have several budget amendments tonight that we are presenting as we begin to officially close out this current FY22 fiscal year, and we're adjusting our estimated expenses that we budgeted at the beginning of the fiscal year to actual expenditures that were incurred as we prepare to close out the year. This first amendment specifically adjusts those labor and other costs within major budget categories, from budgeted estimates at the beginning of the fiscal year to now the anticipated actuals as we close out. There are no new positions in this budgeted amendment. In addition, this amendment also is necessary to adjust the operating transfer in account for the one-time city allocation that was given to us by city council to pay for the inflation-related bonuses. The board had already approved this recognition of funds, but this approval changes the account codes based on state guidance to ensure that this amount is not included in the city's maintenance-of-effort calculation, and we are recommending approval, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Do we have a motion to approve the budget amendment?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, we have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, now any question or comment, discussion? I see none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I see none, thank you. Special lead high cost.
Yes, sir, this budget amendment is necessary to recognize an increase in state funds of $62,309 that we received for the FY22 Special Education General Purpose Fund. These additional funds come from the state as a reimbursement for high-cost special education expenditures that are incurred during this past school year. This could include things such as students who attend alternative placements, students who may require high-cost transportation, or students who require additional staff to meet their needs of their IEP. The State Department distributes these funds to districts annually based on their available federal funds, and districts must budget them in a special education major category. We have budgeted this revenue in the Special Education Substitute Teacher Line Item. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the high-cost funds, and we recommend approval.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton, we have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Suddles, any question or comment? I see none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you. ESP budget.
This budget transfer is necessary to make end-of-year adjustments to our ESP Labor and Benefits Line Item from the budgeted estimates to the anticipated actual costs. There are no new positions in this amendment. This amendment also budgets additional funds that we had in the Other Charges Line to cover the cost of the summer school field trips that we spoke of earlier. These funds are coming from savings and other supplies and materials, and we recommend approval.
Have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, you have a second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, any question or comment? I see none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you. ESER.
So this, I want to take a second and talk about our ESER I allocation. If you can go all the way back to November of 2020, I believe, is when we received our first ESER I allocation from the State Department, or sorry, from the federal government to respond to COVID. That was right around $1.2 million that we received. The deadline to have those funds expended is this June 30, so we're coming up on that deadline now. So this budget amendment is necessary to revise line items as we begin to close out and use the rest of this ESER money before the deadline of June 30. The proposed amendment is gonna reallocate $18,132 of savings found in the General Education Substitute Line Items to the Special Education Substitute Line Items, as well as instructional materials and supplies. There are no new revenues and no programmatic changes. This allocation change in this amendment again will allow us to expend all of the funds by the end of June 30.
Now a motion to approve the amendment.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Suddles, we have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff, any question or comment? I see none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you. ESER 2.0.
This is our ESER 2.0 application revision, and I do want to take just a minute and talk through a couple of things on this, because this one has several programmatic changes into it, and usually when we do budget amendments, we say there are no programmatic changes. This actually does have some programmatic changes. We originally received the ESER II allocation of 5.6, a little over 5.6 million dollars in the spring of 2021, of the 2021 school year. Again, just like ESER I, this was designed to allow districts to receive relief, respond to, or recover from the COVID-19 pandemic. This past school year, 2122, that we just ended, was the second year of this grant, and next year, 2223, will be our final year to expend the funds. So a great way to think about it is ESER I ends this June 30, ESER II, which we're looking at now, will end next June 30. So we have one year left to look at these funds. When we originally did our ESER II budget, we included a substantial set aside specifically for two years of summer school. And the reason we did that is we knew the legislators had passed a law saying we had to offer summer school. At that point, it was unclear if that was gonna, for us as a school district, if we would have to use our ESER funds, if there was other funding for it. Knowing we wanted to have a very robust summer school program, we budgeted for that. As you remember, last year, we had over 1,600 kids that attended. And not just did we pay teacher salaries, we pay school nurses, we pay crossing guards, we pay for a principal at every summer school, everything you need. We bought a complete curriculum for that program as well. After we had budgeted that money, the state did release the summer school grant for last year. So that was great, so we got to save some of that back. Again, going into this year, we were unsure if that would be a recurring fund, or again, if we'd have to use ESER funds. This year, the state has released the same amount and given us money towards summer school, so both years, they've given us about $2 million each year to run our summer school program. Now, it will be clear, it is costing us more than that $2 million. We think about instructional materials and supplies and all the other things we discussed. So now that we are into summer school and we have that budget done, we feel much more comfortable rebudgeting this money, knowing we have enough in state funds for the summer school that we will not need to allocate our own ESER funds for it. So we had originally about $842,801 left unneeded that we had needed for summer school. This amendment takes a little over $500,000 of that money and moves it to some different categories. There are no new revenues and no changes to fund balance, but we are using that money really in four areas. The first area is to fund four of our current full-time interventionists. So our intention at the end of this year was to move four interventionists that we had put in ESER to help build up our fund balance back into GP. And we had, we presented a budget to you that did just that. We are actually looking at now putting those back in ESER II, because as we, as a board, have had some individual conversations, we know that the county commission is currently considering a budget that may reallocate some property tax dollars. If they do reallocate that property tax amount, it will have a negative impact on our budget this year, and we want to make sure that we can still feel very comfortable with the budget. So this is really more of a proactive measure of, just to make sure that we have that funding that we need. The second piece of that is in regard to math and our learning loss around math, which is again, an approvable expense under ESER. We are going into this next school year where we will do our textbook adoption for math that happens once every seven years, and it is a very robust project. It's governed by state law, so we have committees that include parents, people from the university, teachers, a lot of vendors come in and look and talk to us. There's a lot of training, because whatever textbook we pick, we will have for the next seven years, and we want to make sure it's the right one that's gonna lead to the best scores and best achievement for our students. So what we also want to use this money to is to go ahead and hire a math specialist to help with that transition as we go into that for the year. This is gonna benefit us on two points. One, as we've had conversations about, we know that our current math coordinator is wrapping up her tenure and is looking to move on to the next chapter of her life, and that could very well happen in the middle of this adoption process. So again, kind of a proactive measure to say, let's get the person that will continue in that role a year early, give them a year to work together, and the person that ultimately is in charge of carrying out the implementation is part of the adoption process as well. We also would move our current math coordinator, who's paid for at a different set of federal funds, Title II, into this, again, just to free up some more money there for some professional development. The third piece there is as we continue to look back at our budget, as we continue to know that we had a lot of overtime in the custodial area this past year, so we want to reallocate some money because that was due to COVID, so we're gonna allocate some money for custodial services there. And then the final piece is, we have in our capital plan to buy four school buses this year, three of them general ed, regular school buses, one special ed school bus. We actually went ahead and the city council and board approved a hot, purchased one early at the end, just a couple months ago, because it was available on the lot, so that left three left to purchase. Instead of pulling that money from our city fund, our shared county bonds, we would buy a school bus out of this ESER funds, which we have done previously before. So again, allowing us to go ahead and get the jumpstart on that. So those are the programmatic changes. Again, that money was just kind of been sitting there to make sure we didn't need it for summer school, and then this is how we would reallocate those funds. And I'm happy to answer questions you have on that, and I believe Ms. Arnett is here as well, and Ms. Williams, if you have questions regarding any of those as well.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the ESER 2.0 revisions?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton, we have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff, now any question or comment?
I have a question.
All right.
What's the lead time on the buses still? I remember we talked about that not too long ago, has it gotten any better?
That's a, I don't think it's gotten a lot better, the lead time on buses. It is taking us a while, in fact, that's why we went ahead and moved with that last one, because they had it and we jumped on it. So Ralph, I don't know if you have any additional information on the lead time on buses?
We were fortunate, the school system purchased those buses, but then decided not to go through the order, so we had an opportunity, we took advantage of it. Other than that, yes, there is a long lead time.
Long time, that's all we know, long time.
And not just on buses, on, there are several vehicles we're looking to purchase that we have, you know, when it comes to our maintenance vans, there's a long lead time on all of them.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you. Federal Consolidated Budget.
Yes, sir, this budget amendment is necessary for our current FY22 Title I, Title II, Title III, and IDEA grants. Again, this is adjustments from beginning-of-the-year estimates to end-of-the-year actual expenditures in the amount of $34,077. There are no new revenues or major programmatic changes, and no changes to fund balance, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
We have a motion to approve the 22 federal consolidated budget revision.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, any question or comment? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I see none, thank you. 21st Century Grant Revision.
This budget amendment is in the school's federal project fund and is necessary to move end-of-the-year savings in the line items for bus drivers, travel, and other supplies and materials to the Labor and Benefits Line Item for our 21st Century Grant Schools. Again, this is an end-of-the-year cleanup amendment, there are no revenue changes and no major programmatic changes or changes to fund balance, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
We have a motion to approve the 21st Century Grant Revision.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton, we have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, any question or comment? I see none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you. ARP IDEA Part B.
Yes, sir, this budget amendment is in the school's federal projects funds as well. It's the ARP, or American Rescue Plan IDEA Part B Grant, or Special Education Grant. It reallocates $11,300 of savings in labor and benefits to the other contracted service line to extend our DocuSign e-signature for the next school year. The DocuSign e-signature platform is what we use to allow our families to have virtual IEP meetings. There are no new revenues and no major programmatic changes or no changes to fund balance, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
We have a motion to approve the ARP IDEA Part B Revision.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Suddles, any question or comment? I see none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you. Math Implementation Grant.
This is actually some new funds we're gonna recognize tonight. As I just spoke a few minutes ago, we are about to start the new math textbook adoption process in the fall. This budget amendment recognizes a grant that was applied for by Ms. Kalish specifically to help and assist with the implementation of a new math textbook. It's for $142,500 in the school's federal projects funds, and it was awarded to MCS. It will pay $71,000 during both next year and the following year, specifically for us to work with a consultant to help implement the new textbook and the adoption process. This will help fund learning walks with our central office staff, as well as our leaders, provide training to the team that's actually adopting the textbook, and the second year will actually help with the implementation of the new curriculum. And we are recommending approval of this, this new grant revenue.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton, we have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I see none, thank you. Surety Bond.
This is the renewal of the statutory bond for our MCS Finance Director for a one-year term beginning February 22 through February of 23. State law requires that the treasurer or fiscal agent of the LEA execute a statutory bond. This bond protects the school district from any loss of funds. The amount of the bond is a calculation formula based on the funds collected, and it is the same amount as last year.
I move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Suddles, we have a second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, any question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I see none, thank you. Differentiated Pay Plan.
Tennessee Code Annotated 49-3-306 requires that all school districts create and implement a differentiated pay plan each year. State board policy requires that each differentiated pay plan include compensation based on at least one of the following criteria. We can offer differentiated pay based on hard-to-staff subjects or schools, based on additional instructional roles or responsibilities, or based on performance. For the 2223 school year, MCS's differentiated pay plan includes a retention and recruitment bonus for our, or stipend for our sixth-grade teachers and for our best or behavior classroom teachers under the hard-to-staff positions. We are recommending approval as presented, and the cost for these stipends was included in the budget that the board approved earlier this year.
I move for approval.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Suddles, have a second.
Second.
Ms. Barton, thank you. Any question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I see none, thank you. All right, reports and information, tentative assignments. Mr. Ringstaff?
Yes, sir. Tennessee Code Annotated 49-5-401, employment and assignment of persons...
Tennessee Code Annotated 49-5-401, Employment and Assignment Personnel, requires us to publish a tentative assignment list for the next school year by June 15. So you're following pages, I think there are 13 pages, one for each school. There's a tentative assignment list as of June 9. And there will be some changes made, but you will get the most up-to-date assignment list in August.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Director's update?
Yes, sir. Not a whole lot of updates today. We are into our second week of summer school, and it's just going great. The kids are having a great time. I've gotten several emails. I know Ms. Arnett has gotten emails. Got stopped at church on Sunday, telling me how much their sons love in summer school. So it's been a really great couple of weeks. I really want to say thank you to our teachers who are teaching, our administrators who are leading at those four sites, and to Ms. Arnett and her instruction team. Every morning, they start their day in one of those schools, and every time I go by, I run into one of them. And yesterday, I saw some of them helping teachers just get some stuff done. So it's really been an all-hands-on approach. So that's been really exciting to watch. So I think we have two weeks left after this week. Is that correct? Yeah. Two weeks left of that. So thank you to those friends. Also want to say that our budget was officially passed by our city council. So thank you to Mr. Shackleton, the city council. So we do have a budget that is approved for next school year, which we're really excited about as well. As we mentioned earlier, we, there may be some changes to our revenues depending on some decisions made by the county commission. If that happens, we will adjust that accordingly and bring that back. So I wanted to put that on there. But the budget has been passed. And those are all my updates for tonight.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board?
I do. I'm sorry.
Just Ms. Barton.
I had somebody ask me this, and that's why I wanted to say this, but it seems like that we go through an awful lot of items very quickly. But I want you to know that we've had information about all of these items, a thorough explanation of all of these items several days in advance, and we have the opportunity to contact Dr. Duke at any point. Usually, he contacts us first to be sure we don't have questions. So, I mean, I didn't want anybody to think that these decisions are made like this because we're in a hurry to get out. We are so well-prepared to make the decision when we get here that we don't have a lot of necessary discussions, so.
You know, it's unusual, because I was going to mention what you was talking about, and the memo that you put to give us the explanation for all these different budget amendments is certainly very helpful. I understand that a whole lot more than I do all those numbers that Ms. Williams puts down.
Right.
Ms. Williams makes those memos for me, too.
All right. Ms. Goff?
I was just going to ask, we haven't heard anything from the county commission about our budget or...